Okay, six o'clock, we're gonna bring the meeting to order. Minutes, April seventeenth, meeting. I need a motion, Larry, you wanna make-
I make a motion to approve the minutes for April seventeenth, 2024.
Okay, I second that. Any discussion on those minutes? Any corrections? Lisa? All good? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, yeah, approved. Adjustments to the agenda. Harold had talked about being moved to the, yep, front of the list, so if you have no problem with that, Larry.
No objection.
Okay, and Zach couldn't make it tonight. He's got work troubles, so he's not gonna be joining us.
Just go on, let's make it quick. What?
Listen.
What'd you say?
Is that an adjustment to the agenda?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, so, go ahead, Harold, let's, uh-
So there should be some paving bids and chloride bids.
Yep, I see, you got, yep, right here. Okay.
Should be, I think, I believe it's two chloride bids and three paving bids.
Okay. And then we had three, yep, you're right, okay. So Larry, you think we'll get to do something, I'll open the chloride bids.
Oh, those are easy.
Yeah, I know.
Pull the big club off.
I know.
Everybody else-
I had to open the bids the other night.
Well, you're good at it.
I'm taking a break here, I'm taking a break. Uh, okay, so, price delivered per gallon, one eighteen, this is Allstate. Price per gallon, applied, one forty.
Yeah, we supply our hours.
Right, okay.
What's the amount?
Uh, one eighteen per gallon delivered. And then, uh, let's see, firm, innovative, municipal-
Innovative.
Innovative municipal products. One fifty-five a gallon delivered. Must be different, so I guess-
Well, what it is, they have tanks from Allstate.
So they-
So they have to supply the tanks.
Okay.
That's why it's high.
Okay, so, I guess Allstate's got it.
Good for Allstate.
Okay, your turn. Okay. Pike Industrial. Hot Mix, ninety-five, ninety-five a ton. Total price, one oh one, two twenty-seven, twenty-five. Did you get all that?
No.
One oh one, two hundred and twenty-seven dollars, twenty-five cents.
Okay.
Pike.
This is the evening one?
Evening, yeah.
Yeah, for Pike.
Yeah. You want the chloride ones, or you-
I have a little channel, I could make sure I got it spelt right, thank you.
Blacktop. Ninety-four sixty per ton. And that's it? I don't see a total here. What was the other one, what was Pike's?
One oh one.
For a thousand fifty-five ton.
So the key thing is the price per gallon.
Right, so what was-
What was the price per ton?
Ninety-four sixty.
Ninety-four, alright, what was Pike's, ninety-five something?
Ninety-five, ninety-five. Okay.
Okay.
And then Hutchins. One oh six, twenty-eight, per ton. They did put a total. One thirteen, one eighty-eight, twenty. So you just said it looks like Blacktop's better. Blacktop. There's nobody here from Blacktop that can help you? Okay.
Do you have to make a motion, no?
To approve?
To approve a bid, or no? Accept it?
Yeah.
I think you should do it for chlorine, chloride, or whatever you call it.
Okay. I make a motion that we accept. Now, I can't even remember who. Allstate, constructions, price at one eighteen a gallon for chloride.
I second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
I make a motion to accept Blacktop at ninety-four sixty per ton.
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So, Blacktop, all in favor. Give me those numbers, too. That work for you, Harold?
Works for me.
Absolutely won't.
Thank you.
What? Thank you.
Thank you. Pike's gonna have to sharpen their pencil!
You wanna, maybe, just get a copy to your sign, or sign that one?
Yep, either way, uh-
You can send it.
We need a copy, we can, if we, what do you wanna do, Lisa?
Um, sign it, and then I, we can, we scan it, okay? We want you scanning.
Yeah, I agree with you, Harold. That was it?
You're female, and you have to-
You didn't have any other wonderful news?
Stands put up.
Okay. You're done?
Done with that.
Okay, so grading and-
Grading, addition.
Okay.
If I wrote, let's get it, I'll scan it to you, and then we'll have a copy.
Sounds good.
Insurance and all that stuff. Okay, good. How's the game going?
Uh, we were losing three-five, but they were playing so good, and I'm so excited.
Thank you, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yep, take care. Did you need these, or no? Your own stuff?
I got the numbers.
Okay.
I'll, I'll take them.
Yeah, I signed this one from Blacktop, so that's mine, his chair, so-
You probably should sign the Allstate one, too, just to be consistent.
I don't know if there was a thing to sign, let me see.
Oh, there wasn't?
Well, I don't know, let me see.
Okay.
No, it's not really a thing to sign.
Okay. You have a motion, that's fine.
Okay. Okay, moving along. Uh- Hi, Carrie.
Hello.
Glad you made it. Zach couldn't make it.
Okay.
Work and stuff. Sooo, we already did, uh, no, we haven't done that, but we moved Highway Up, so bids for drainage project, are we-
Yeah, well, we just thought you-
Are we on set with those?
Yeah, I think you just wanna talk about it, and then accept one.
Okay.
So Nate, uh, gave this spreadsheet-
Ruggles.
Yeah, Nate, um, from Ruggles, gave a spreadsheet of the differences and comparisons. You can read his little notes.
Okay.
And then, he then broke it down to, um, the bid amount was this amount, and then-
Okay.
And that was up.
Those are the real numbers?
Yeah, yeah, those are the real numbers, so-
Okay, so the other night, let's see, so what, Tues- is it Tuesday night?
Yep.
Tuesday night, last night, right, yeah, we were here, yeah, last night. Okay, last, yesterday afternoon, uh, we did, we had three bidders on the drainage project, uh, for the community building, fire station stuff. Um, I haven't read it. Here. That was on Nathan's, on Leflam's thing, that he's claiming there was a, on the bond?
Yeah.
The note?
Right. Yeah, he said when he got here, he didn't have his bond paper, whatever, I don't really know what that means, but he didn't have it.
But Nate wasn't concerned about that.
Well, at the time, he thought he would have it by now, and I don't think he ever got it, so that rejected it.
If I didn't ask for total, total price of the three hundred. Did you hear that, did you-
I did, I heard-
The Alliance was off on-
Fourteen thousand.
On their, on their adding, I guess.
So-
So the two bids that are actually, uh, real bids would be Blue Mountain and Alliance. Is really, at the end of the day, what it comes, comes in, comes in that. Um, so, total bids. So, the bid amount, which I'm assuming we're awarding to Alliance Escavating, do we, will we make a motion and all that? Okay, yeah, it's three hundred thousand, one hundred and thirty-six dollars even. Blue Mountain Trucking Escavating was three hundred and seventy-four thousand even. Um, and those are the two, two, um, two bidders.
Qualified, I guess, bids, yeah.
Two qualified bidders. Uh, Leflam came in at three hundred and eighty-seven thousand, eighty-four dollars and sixty-four cents, but I don't think his bid is official, so. Um, so I would assume that we're gonna accept, accept the low bid of three hundred thousand from Alliance Escavating. Um, do you wanna make a motion? I make a motion that we accept the bid of three hundred thousand, one hundred and thirty-six dollars from Alliance Escavating for the drainage project.
I just, Nate recommended that contract.
Yep, yep.
And they're out of Danville, right?
Yeah, yeah.
They're out of Danville, he's worked with them before. He asked them for a list of, um, references, but I haven't gotten them yet.
Yeah.
Um, but Nate has worked a few projects with him, and felt very good about it, so-
Yeah, 'cause the only thing, a red flag, that big of a difference, which we thought was a hundred, is seventy-four.
Right.
Woke me up a little, just why such a difference, and I did scrutinize him, and he works his equipment for a lot less money.
No, that's what you were-
That's with a dollar.
And it also seemed like we could get parts, like, like co-parts and some of it.
Some of it was up and down on that, but the big, I gotta- Was his hourly equipment rate?
His, his common excavation a yard is three dollars a yard. Jeremy's is thirteen. Nate's was, so there's twenty-five thousand.
Yep.
Sidewalk, he was seventeen, Jeremy was thirty-seven. So, big disparity there. Hopefully, concrete's gone up, from what they tell me. So, just so people know how it, that's spread there. And site, restoration, he was, he was twelve-five. Jeremy was ten thousand more. So, that, that brought, that was fifty, fifty-four thousand.
Right.
So, there's, bottom lines, he's running his equipment for pennies on the dollar.
Right.
For whatever reason. I guess that's not our concern. Parts and pieces, which I call, call, you know, there was, it was both ways. He was hard on some, he was a little, but those are pretty, it's all depends on how much you mark them up, so.
Yep.
So, and as a, me getting a bid for two hundred thousand to three, three hundred thousand to four hundred, it did alarm me. I would, not knowing the contract, and not knowing, um, but I guess after beating this, if he's willing to do it for this, I can accept it, so. That's my homework, I do.
Okay, good job.
So-
Yeah, good, looking into it. Uh, so, did you second the motion? No.
I don't know. Did you say, did you-
He said it, he doesn't say it.
I made a motion, then there'd be discussion, which we just had discussion.
Yeah.
And then all in favor would be now, so, all in favor of the low bid?
Aye.
Aye. Okay? So we have a contract. Now, we just gotta figure out when we're gonna start, all that. Go from there, good. Alright. Moving on, okay. Uh, I guess we need to adopt a local emergency management plan.
They left there for you.
I know, we could have stuff there.
That's it.
There's a lot of stuff right here.
That's a bid, no, hold on, that's a bid stuff. And you want the, this stuff, too, to go with that? Okay. Got a lot of stuff going on. Gonna need a secretary or something.
Right, next to you.
You need a better one.
Stuff, yeah. I like sticky notes, can you make little things?
I'll bring some.
Alright, so-
So that's the one I emailed to everybody.
Right.
And, uh, I think you guys looked at it last time.
Yeah.
And Brent emailed me back when I sent it out, that he said it all looked good. Yeah, I just updated the change in names, and not really as much else. You know, the select board member changes and stuff like that.
Okay, good, which, I know we talked about it, and we reviewed it a little bit, and do you have a chance to look at it here, or you don't?
So we'll go to Bruce Melinde, and he'll look it over, and if he sees something, he'll, you know, put it in the address.
Call it out, too? So do we need to make a motion if it's still gonna go to another?
No, I, yeah, I think you still gotta make a motion, 'cause we're, you're technically adopting it.
Okay.
I think last time, he, there was one change that he made.
Okay.
Hopefully, it's still in there, so.
Go ahead.
Okay, I make a motion, we adopt the, I gotta look again.
Local.
Local emergency management, it's a long, it's a long thing.
I mean a lot of it.
Um, management plan, as written.
I second it.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, it's adopted.
Then you just gotta, you gotta sign that-
Review. Okay.
Thing, and then I'll send it off to him.
Okay. I gotta sign, let's see, two places?
Two spots, yeah.
Okay. What?
I didn't bring, uh, railroad bed ordinance.
Oh, I did, I put it, I put it in the stack.
Oh, good, thank you.
Okay, good. Uh, so, next thing, uh, Harold paving, we're done that. Look at the town policy for overnight camping, new town ordinances.
So I, I left you a copy of the zoning, I went through, I'm sure Dan knows, too, like, there's really nothing in the zoning for that. In the railroad bed ordinance, I think I left three copies of that, shorter one. And I highlighted, I think the second page of the railroad bed, just has a little snippet about camping on town property, but it's not really a, a big, you know, ordinance or anything.
Okay. So my, my thought is, in order to, my thoughts on this was, in order to protect the town, um, from people, people, uh, pitching tents and living on town property, or so on and so forth, is to have a policy that, that's not allowed unless otherwise, um, permission from the select board or something, so if, for some reason, a school was doing some kind of a special program and wanted permission to do something with a, on town property, or whatever, we could allow that, but just, um, it's, it's not okay for people to start living on town property, pitch a tent, so on and so forth. What was your thoughts, Larry, do you have any, any, you know?
I've got nothing to add, so.
Um, I don't know, but I'd like more, I'd like Zach, I guess, to be part of the, the input on that. Does anybody else have anything? Dan, what do you think?
Well, I've been strong, I'm having some sort of policy, so we don't run into what we ran into last year.
Right.
Something that protects the town from liability, 'cause right now, town isn't liable.
Right, right. Um, the state, I'm not really concerned about what the state says or doesn't say, at this point, we're just trying to protect our, our town, you know, per se, and have something that says, hey, you can't do this. The other thing is, do we have, you know, what would be the consequences? Do we have a, just, like, um, town property, like, destruction of town property, too, that, do we have anything that goes along with that? Which would be kinda the same idea, if you, you know, leave stuff there, junk that has to be cleaned up, some kind of accountability, and so I guess we gotta kinda discuss this in more, is it fined per day? Is it, you know what I mean, what do we, what, what's, does anybody else have any ideas?
Yeah, I mean, I think something with the town ordinance, um, summarizing all of that, of no camping, no, you know, without permission, any destruction of property, I guess we could, you could put in, we could, I could try to see if other towns have anything, I haven't really heard of too much, but-
Okay.
Um, could just, at least put something in place, so when someone does it, you can say, hey, we have ordinance against us, and whether it does it-
Well, consequences, so it's three hundred dollars a day, or it's fifty bucks, or it's ten dollars, or it's a thou-, you know, I'm just something, I don't know, whether we can collect anything isn't really the, you know, it's kinda the idea of having something for consequences.
Ultimately, it is protecting the town from, you know, more liability.
Right, right. So, um, I guess we'll kinda table it, and hopefully Zach will, will have, keep it on the agenda, and we'll have some more discussion about that. What do you think, Mike, anything from you?
I'm looking at the ordinance now, the railroad bed ordinance kinda has a bunch of language that could be used for other properties, it looks like.
Okay.
And I just was, I mean, the notice to trespass on the last page, not that I'm a legal person, but I feel like that's probably what we could do, would be to file a notice of trespassing for someone who can't start there, serve them with a trespassing order, and see if that gets them to leave.
Right.
You have that in here for the railroad-
Which I think we, we're gonna need something, if it, if it were to happen, and Dan would need something to serve, and, you know, you've been served, and-
And a copy of what?
The copy of the town policy, and the blah, 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 and the consequences if you don't, whatever, and so on, I guess, would, I would say-
You could try to certificate service.
Try to get something put together, so-
So it would be separate, it wouldn't be adjusting the current railroad bed ordinance?
No, I think it would be a separate-
A separate one, okay.
Policy would be done.
Right. So it's clear, and it's, it's clean, you know, like-
Yeah, 'cause that's the railroad bed, it's, you know, they're focused on that.
Right.
So we, we want town property.
Right, right. Okay, so, unless there's anything else, let's, let's work on that some more next, next, next time. Okay, um, so railroad bed ordinance discussion, which-
I'd like to see something.
Oh, okay, which, that more has to do with, is that gating and more?
More with the gating. Um, last meeting, I was totally against gating.
Yeah.
Mike sent me some pictures, uh, and I followed up some of the stuff, and I actually was able to witness some things Sunday morning. I think it totally needs to be gated.
Okay. Okay.
So we're doing a trail count for the railroad.
Okay.
So we have to give the state, as part of our grant, a precondition trail count, so what was, what was visitation like before we did our work, and what was visitation like after? I couldn't find these trail counters, they cost a lot of money, so I bought gaming cameras.
Yeah, okay.
Set them up in the brush, and I'm catching-
It's amazing.
Real.
There's a lot of people flying on the railroad.
Yeah, and see, that's-
Driving across the hatch bridge, I mean, you know, seen it all.
Really?
I've seen it all, yeah.
Arby's, um, Jeeps, um-
Unsavory-looking people.
And it's not, it's not your hunters, like I was talking about.
Right, right.
These people are road racing.
Okay.
I only had them in, like, four locations for one week, and, I mean, it's-
Jesus.
The ones doing, like, bad stuff, like flying, or dirt bikes, or, uh, four-wheelers is probably like fifteen a week. And the, you know, the typical, you could see when they're creeping by looking for turkey sign or something, you could tell those people, but then you see people following each other in, and then following each other out.
Okay.
You know, like, clearly don't-
So it's funny how cameras can change, 'cause I never had cameras, then I put cameras on my property and whatever, and I'm like, God, there's all these people that come, I didn't even know that, this much traffic, it's, you just, you don't really realize it until, until whatever. So we're lucky that we don't have more problems, really.
It's coming.
With the traffic.
It's coming, if it's not gated, that's my feeling.
Okay.
And I'll go into more on that during the help.
Okay, so, moving ahead with that discussion, I guess the next, the next part of that would be, okay, how would we do it? Where would we, where would we need the gates? What type of gates would we put in, you know, so on and so forth, how we would set it up, 'cause we would have to have, obviously, a system that goes along with this, this gating thing, and so on and so forth, and it's gonna take some thought and some planning, and, and money, and lots of things.
There are people that will have to have keys, Mr. Clough.
Of course, of course.
Yeah.
Landowners, um-
Of course.
Enjoying land.
I'm not saying it's easy, and that it's gonna be a wonderful thing, but I'm, I'm thinking-
Necessary thing.
That it's necessary.
It's very necessary.
The only problem that I wish that we had done, if we had talked about this before, this grant, and got this kinda dealt with at the same time, maybe, or it's before we go and fix it all up, and then we gotta rip it up to, 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 to put gate, I don't know, like, it doesn't matter.
I didn't think there was that much of a problem. There is a problem, there's a definite problem.
Okay. So, let's, I guess we're gonna need to talk more about this, and try to figure out how to put this together with the planning committee, well, how would we, who would we, who's gonna, you know what I mean, like, we gotta figure out who's-
We've got to map that out, and think where a gate needs to be.
Yeah, somebody needs to, we're gonna have to work on this, and try to figure out how to figure this out, I guess, and obviously-
And would you do gates or pollards?
We'll have to put together a gate committee. Not funny, but-
Well, we're just gonna have to use it for fire-
Yeah, it's gonna have to be gates, because you have to be able to open it.
Of course, yeah, so the fire department, the highway committee, there's certain landowners, there's certain this, there's certain that, are gonna have access to the gates. We gotta figure out where they're gonna be placed, so that they're placed correctly. Um, we wanna make them as easy as possible, maintenance-wise, so on and so forth, like, I had talked to Robco about pricing, and they said that they could design gates that are all connected, and then we dig a trench, and we set them in, and then that means they can't, the posts can't get messed up, but the gate, they're all one unit, you just dig a trench across and set the whole thing in the round. Then, then there's-
So how do you open it for the, the one, quick thing that you gotta-
Well, it'll be gated up, it'll be a gate, but it's one unit that, that stays together, and then, of course, you have to have a, a walking, biking-
Yeah, open area.
Expansion there, for that to happen, and so, there's a lot of discussion, and then are they painted, or are they galvanized, or are they, what do we, you know, it's like the whole thing, so-
Galvanizers, yeah.
Huh?
Galvanizers.
I agree, I agree with that. Um, so it's gonna be, this isn't gonna happen anytime-
Put it on the to-do list.
Soon, but I think we're gonna need to continuously talk more about it, and try to figure out-
So, you've asked for an estimate, or just an, from Robco, or?
I haven't, I just, just had, Willis is really busy, but, you know, I don't know how many gates, we gotta figure out, first of all, how many gates we're looking at? Six, eight, twelve?
Eight or twelve.
So, we gotta figure out a number of gates, then we gotta figure out where they're gonna be, then pricing, and then somebody's gotta put this all together, we need a gate committee. Dan?
Sounds like you can be in charge a lot.
So I don't know, um, at this point, it's just, it's, I guess, a discussion, and we'll-
Well, Gary maybe can help us, seeing he's, he's familiar with them, or-
Right, and Vass, Matt with Vass says, any way they can help with this, this, too, because they've had complaints with traffic on the tracks, and so, I don't know, we're just, and maybe, I'm sure there's probably a grant, we could get some money to help us with this stuff. We actually have, may have leftover money from that, I don't know if it'd be used for that, you know?
I'd have to ask them, like, right now, I thought of that, I was like, can we, maybe, you have to show them that you did something with them, 'cause at first, I was like, why don't I see if I can, any leftover funding, buy gates?
Right.
But they're gonna tell you, you have to install them, too, so I can't just, like, buy them and stockpile and figure out-
Which, you know what, maybe, and that's not necessarily that big a deal to install a gate, you know?
Right.
If the gates are made right, they're pretty simple, you, you know, so, I guess-
I'm not sure what would be left, so I don't know what to propose, either. I'm not sure what would be left, so I don't know what to propose either. If things go over, then we don't have any money. But if like, if our bids were probably inconsistently low, I could.
What about that ARPA money, any left? Can that be possibly, so we may, we may be able to do some work on this. We'll just keep it in discussion. I'd like Zach to be, you know, and see if maybe we could find anybody that would be interested in helping us with this project. In the town that would, that would be maybe even a landowner that has land that would like to see this. Um, that would be willing to help us would be good. Okay, anything else there?
Nope.
Okay. All right, moving along. Uh, so I already got our highway treasurer, Lisa.
Okay, um, so our general fund is getting low.
Okay.
And we need to borrow money from the money market account that is our surplus, surplus, um, money.
We're not gonna just collect taxes early.
No, I don't think anybody will pay. So we still got like five months, so. So I have a letter asking, um, to borrow a hundred thousand just to start. Hopefully that's all we need. The balance is two hundred and seven thousand, two hundred and forty-seven dollars in the surplus. Um, and one reason why, we usually borrow until July, but one reason is we didn't get the, we got the first two quarters of the highway money that we get. Last, they gave it to us early due to the flood last year, thinking we needed it.
So we were.
Yeah, so now.
Not just us, the whole state.
Yeah, the whole state, they gave it to us early to help. So I, I would like this to be approved tonight if you can, cause we're getting quite low.
That's fine. So let's make a motion. Let's. I gotta get you up to speed here, Larry.
It's gonna take a while.
I know.
Yeah, I make a motion to transfer a hundred thousand from the TD Bank surplus to the general fund account.
I second that motion.
All in favor?
Say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Good.
Okay, thank you. Um. Okay, um, there's a few letters. I think that Tristan had them for pertaining to the drainage project. And the Vorick projects that items that need to be removed. So that is in your.
I have one. Oh, in the folder?
Yeah, I think so. Larry has them right here.
I already.
Okay.
Okay.
Just to give you an update, um, VLCT, which is our insurance, they pass it, they came on April twenty-third to view the three buildings. So there's a few exit lights, um, that have some bulbs out. Um, we looked at the back entrance of the gym that, you know, that concrete is disintegrating.
Okay.
There's a, um, the ramp to get into this building down here downstairs. That plate right before you come into the door, there's a lip like this and that can't be, it's not okay. He's, um, and then there was a bunch of old lights that were stored by the, um, electrical panel on that little landing. So we needed to move that. Um, so, so all these things, he hasn't written it all up yet, but he will. Um, so, um, a couple of things, the exit lights, I'll have to talk to Tim Corey. It's usually cheaper to replace the unit than the bulbs.
There's more than one bulb in those?
Yeah, I think so. I think each letter has a bulb. I think.
Can't we just go to LED ones and then we don't have to worry about that?
I don't know. I don't know.
All right, so anyways, okay.
So, and I had Steve come down. He moved all the stuff from that. There was big old light units that were stored in there. He backed it all up because there was droppings of, I don't know what.
Okay, good.
So that, that part's clean. Um, also he was looking over here in this closet, um, the constable equipment. You know how we had the, we have the big lights and then the radios and, and he said that, um, he thinks other towns would be interested in this. So he was gonna let Trevor Whipple know. So he did and Trevor said he'd like to come over and look at it. And I wanted to talk to you to see.
Make an offer.
Do you want to give it or do you want to, there's a backup body camera too that's fairly new.
Well, it should be worth something, that stuff. We paid, we paid pretty good money for all that stuff. So, so just like a lump sum, I don't, I don't know.
Take it all.
Yeah, take it all. So what, five hundred bucks, uh?
I can ask him what he thinks is fair and then bring it back to you or whatever, um, just something.
Bring it back to us. Make a deal.
Just something. Okay, all right.
Make a donation.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, um, the Vorick grant, um, contracts, um, there's three different, um, contracts.
Okay.
So they're slowly coming back in, but I do have a few that you all need to sign that have come back. Um, one company, Hogan Excavating, that is supposed to be doing the culvert and ditching. That is to start anytime between May and June, I think.
Yeah.
They haven't reached out to me at all.
Oh, on the railroad bed?
Yeah, I've spoken to him. He's gonna do it. He just had two questions and just is not getting in part of his computer phase.
Okay, all right. So, um, I have those and then, um, there's a cemetery contract. That the cemetery has hired, um, Zach Emerson and Sons Logging, Emerson and Sons Logging. And they already have done the work.
So we're supposed to sign this contract before they did the work?
Well, it was brought to me on the day that he was doing the work, so I have it. So we need to sign that. The fire department roof, the NVDA grant option that Tristan and I were told from Jesse.
Jesse.
Said that, um, you know, he thought this would all work great, but now Jesse said, um, this isn't going to work and it's a nightmare. Don't do it and maybe.
It's the weirdest thing in the world.
Yeah, and maybe.
Well, I know, but he's the one that mentioned this to me. He called me and he's like, hey, I think, you know, send me the stuff we did and then now he's like.
No, and he said if you have people that write grants, he's recommended to, um, links that possibly could help somewhere.
Diane?
You know, I'm not signing up for that, so.
No, that's fine.
We were already planning to.
We were already planning on anyways. It was kind of like one of those.
It was a nice struggle, yeah.
Things that didn't go anywhere and it sounds like to me that his grant things weren't going as well as we thought that things.
So I, I think we do need to think about putting that out to bed or something now, you know?
But we need to, um, yeah, we do need to put that out to bed. Do we need to fine tune that a little bit more?
Probably.
We need to, um, yeah, we need to, uh, cause we don't, I don't know what has been done for shoring up in there and whatever.
It's just a rock deck, wasn't it?
Nothing's been done to the, the station roof. All they've done is the back. Furnace. The furnace roof. Which was part of the project, which we're gonna build over the furnace roof so the ice didn't fall off and fall on that and so on and so forth. So we, I guess we're gonna need to, um, we're gonna need to work on that a little bit, um, somebody.
Well, the fire department could write up what, what.
Does the fire department know?
Yeah, they know the specific.
Okay, thank you.
So if you could put it on the follow-up, Harley. The town audit, we're almost done with our checklist, the three-page checklist. Um, I have forty more items that she's asked for yesterday. So I'm working on that, but it's all going. Um, I also met with Salvation Army rep. I don't know, Larry, you probably don't know, the town does get, um, a little bit of money from the Salvation Army when needed. And, you know, they, people would come in need to the office and then we would have to determine if it fits in their qualifications. It's only six hundred dollars that we get a year. It's not very much, but sometimes we've helped, um, a community member help pump their septic. We helped somebody put, um.
Pick up trash?
No, no, no.
Okay.
Um, and they did approve some plowing for somebody that needed it, but we, it never fell through. So it was very nice. He was a nice man that I met. Um, he's, he's from Barry. Um, so that was good. I attended an unemployment insurance with this act seventy-six. A lot of things are changing. It's basically how I report things.
Okay.
I handed out budgets. We're at thirty-three, thirty-three percent. And I think that's it. I have more at open.
Jesus.
No, I'm hoping.
Wow, thank you. Thank you very much. Uh, Carrie Temper.
The dog war.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Give it to Dan.
How are we doing on dog stuff? Any?
Dog do? We're good. It's not bad. I mean, there's eighty-two, but eighty-two that we know of. Some of those will probably come off. Um, that big group of them, I did talk with him. And he says he has less than the thirty-some that we have. So that number should be less.
Okay.
But he hasn't been back.
Okay.
And we do know of some dogs that haven't been licensed that after Dan contacts these people, he'll get a list of those dogs and talk with those people.
Okay.
So it's going okay.
Okay.
I have, the moderator has resigned.
Oh, yes, yep.
Uh, he's no longer a resident of Broughton. He's made where his other house is his residency, so, so that will be.
Right, another position to fill, which is not an easy position to fill. Dan? Harley?
Oh, I'm good. I'm already drowning. Thanks.
He also has a funny offer for the town to give his property to the town.
Which we discussed this a little bit and we're not interested in this.
Brett Abear's house, do you know where he lives?
Yeah.
So he's.
Has he got some jointed property he wants to?
No. He's moving. The house at eleven point seven nine acres.
But it's nothing that is that, nothing the town can really use it for or do with it and it's.
So I said I would bring it to you guys and let them know.
I can see that we want, we don't, you know, we're not.
We can't rent, we can't, you know, rent it to someone and get income or anything, so.
It's not feasible for a library or anything like that, so.
What's the location of the property?
Brett Abear's, I'm trying to.
So I.
You saw it to real, uh, real edge?
No.
No. So I, I don't know. Do we need to let him know that?
I'll just tell him.
That we're just, we're sorry, but, you know.
I'll tell him.
None of the real estate business.
But it, I don't, I, it's, it's kind of odd. I don't, I'm not sure why he wants to give it to.
I tried to talk into him about it all different ways and. So the, basically the last thing I have is a petition has come to us. Uh, to have a special town meeting to opt in to cannabis retail in the town of Broughton. So they gave me the petition, one address, uh, one name wasn't legible, so I, and he only gave me the exact amount needed. So I asked him for one more just to make it legal and official. So he brought me one more. So we have that. So that would be, I talked with VLCT. It has to be Australian ballot. So it would just, and we don't have to have an informational meeting. So we would just.
It sounded like, I've heard some discussion on there that they would like to have an informational meeting. On.
Okay.
For you.
That's up to you guys, cause you guys would do it. You guys would run it.
Well, then I don't want to run it.
Yeah.
Why would we? It's not our thing.
Well, I mean.
I guess if somebody needs to come to the, the board and request it then officially that if they want to have an informational meeting. I've heard a little chitter chatter on the, you know, on the discussion and so on and so forth or whatever, but I don't know.
Yeah, cause originally I was thinking it was like town meeting where we would have discussion, but I talked to them today. I said, no, it'd be regular voting all day. You know, ten to seven, Australian ballot.
I guess I'm not gonna worry about it unless.
Will this be for retail sales?
Yeah.
Yes, which falls all under state, state regulations. The town only approves it.
The town, well, yeah, we have to opt in to allowing it, but then we can do a local cannabis board if you wanted to have that. A lot of towns don't have it. Some towns do, but that would just be putting together another.
Board?
Yeah. So I think by next meeting, I can have a warning done up and, and ballots and it would probably be, I'm looking at June eighteenth.
Okay, June eighteenth, oh, that's coming. Okay, yeah, okay. Well, like I said, I'm not gonna worry about it unless you hear something more about it.
We'll do our part when we have to do it.
We'll do our part. I don't know why we, if somebody, I don't know how that all works, but that's okay. Meaning if information, it's not for the town, you know, we're not, why would, why are we in charge of it?
That's why they don't make us have to do it.
Okay.
Where like if, you know, past voting when we, during COVID and we had Australian ballot, we had to do that informational meeting. So this is different than that.
Okay, good.
So that's, that's my plans on that. So for next meeting, I'll have something together.
Okay.
Brief a sign off on a warning and I'll just produce ballots, obviously, in our office.
Okay.
So what you're saying, if they want it to be in discussion or they need to advertise in the paper and get people.
Yeah, and somehow we, I guess we have to run it or whatever.
Well, no, they would just do.
We don't.
It doesn't have to be a town informational meeting. It would be just them, I mean, they could ask to rent the gym and, and have a.
Okay, yeah, yeah. I don't know anything about it.
They wanna get people on there, which.
They wanna put their information out and then, yeah, that's on them.
Right, if you wanna have a campaign to whatever and give information, then that's how you do it.
We as a town don't need to promote it. They do, right?
Right.
And then let the townspeople decide.
Right.
Exactly. Okay, good.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
Well, this is legit.
Well, yeah, I think this is.
This is different.
Yes, they did.
I'm not surprised.
We're gonna get those gates in before that arrives.
Follow up to the store and sell the wood.
Yeah, whole different operation. Okay, so anyways, um, uh, okay, yeah, so it's Dorothy's turn. Assistant assistant.
Um, I gave you a copy of the letter from Jill Remick, uh, PBR. Our, um, statistical reappraisal was approved. Um, and so then we have to have it done. The letter spells out that it has to be done by, um, finalized by July of twenty twenty-five.
Yep.
Um, we talked with John Westinghouse. I did, we, we all three get copies.
Oh.
Um, and he, he did not want to do like a formal contract. He just is gonna work within, um, at his hourly rate. And we'll just keep, he'll keep track of what's reappraisal and what's regular work. And then at the end, Lisa will, I talked to Lisa and she'll make a transfer out of the reappraisal fund.
Okay.
Um, so we'll be getting started on that with, um, I've talked with Nemrick. Uh, one of their folks, Ed Ploidfelder, will be working with, um, John as far as setting up the, the, the computer system and doing the cost tables and cost, all that, um, all of that type of work. Um, and we've got, between John and I, we've got, uh, oh, almost two hundred hours in on this, just to get this approved. I've done a hundred and fifty-two and he's done forty-one and that's documented hour. That's not all the little. So this is, this is significant already and now we've got to start on the reappraisal part. Um, Gary and Lisa got the tablet ordered, so that's here. Um, I'm gonna work with Gary as far as getting that set up, ready to do pictures. And then, um, in the next week or so, I'll email him the first of the maps down for the, as part of that grant that we got from NVDA.
Okay.
Um, and just all the other normal spring work.
Okay.
I think that's it.
Okay, thank you, Dorothy.
Thank you.
Uh, fire and fast. Do we have anything from fire and fast?
They did a controlled burn last night at the Peter Paul House. They had brush piles and things that they wanted burned and they did, it was a joint drill with rigate, so that went fairly well.
I saw that, looks like, yeah.
And, um, fire school this weekend, I think we're up to four people that are going to that.
Okay.
And they'll be advertising next week in the Bridge Weekly for the, um, May Day, um, open house at Statewide. So we're definitely working on that.
Okay, good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything for library? Anything for Library? Okay, Constable?
Um, a lot of dog complaints. Um, and I had a request from Diego High School for police presence at the Scott Brian for their prom. I directed them to the town government side chairs department.
Okay.
That's it for that.
Okay, thank you, Dan.
When is that, Dan?
Uh, you would ask me, fifty-eighteen, I'm not sure. I have it on my computer.
How about zoning?
Zoning, um, we, Dorothy took a ride, I guess, and found a random log cabin at four twenty-seven North County Road.
And.
Spoke with the lady and we got that taken care of. Uh, I spoke with Mike Harrington about cleaning up a metal, uh, the old trailer that was on his property. He's going to take care of that. Um, that's it for that.
Okay, how about Health Officer?
Second complaint on Potterspring. I went to the place next to Smokewood, renter there, could not find where it originated from. But my gut feeling is that it was something from a camper they had parked there, but I couldn't find it. Um, I got a request to go down to check on some needles in the new cemetery, of which, uh, there were needles there. And while I was there doing that, I was able to witness some things going on on the railroad.
Okay.
So, yeah, that's it.
Hey.
Oh, I had one other complaint today. People sleeping in their car on Little Littley Road.
I wouldn't guess that.
I, uh, I went and spoke to the owner of the property. There's nothing about them sleeping in the car. These are friends of theirs, I guess, but the car has to be off the tired portion of the highway.
Or it's a hazard, right?
Yeah.
Okay, interesting. Okay.
Yes.
Maintenance, do we have anything on maintenance?
I have my new computer. Gary's done that.
Yeah, he was here tonight. We're doing some work on that, I guess. I have an interesting maintenance thing that Lisa brought it up about. Well, I think you two have both had talked about having like a bulky day or some kind of a, like, uh, we used to do, of course, like towns would do bulky day or stuff, but we also, we have recycling, which you can take that stuff anytime and there was some, some discussion about would, would it be worth doing like a bulky day with a roll-off or just a trash, you know, like people could take at one time and bring their trash or bulky stuff and throw it away and is there any interest in that and what would it cost us to do something like that?
Why don't you just take the roll off?
And take it around?
Drive around.
I, I, right now.
So a thirty-yard dumpster for a week is how we would do it and it's eight hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay.
Um, we also need to order another greenup, pick, an extra pickup.
For greenup, yeah.
So I'll order that, I believe, we talked about that, it's a hundred and eighty approximately is what it was last year for an extra trash pickup. Um, but, you know, the, the, the tricky part about the bulky or metal day, it ha- if garbage gets put into it.
Bulky day would just be, just be trash, not metal.
Not metal, but wouldn't it be bulky things like mattresses and stuff?
Well, that would be the discussion. Would people actually, we have some problems with people and trash building up. Would people actually just come use it and get rid of some, you know, like, would it help out? Would it help out? Is it worth it to the town? Would, would the townspeople be interested in, in something like that?
And have this be for trash?
Huh?
And do just trash?
Well, it doesn't have to be just trash. It could be everything, right? You can bring a mattress, you can bring a trash bag, or you can bring a couch.
Can't combine the two.
You can't?
No. That's what they said. It has to be clean, metal, or bulky. Can't be trash.
Metal, I wouldn't, I don't think we're worried about metal.
Okay.
Well, metal people can take and people pick up metal and you can get rid of it for money and.
Couches, chairs, tables.
So I guess the discussion is, is anybody interested in that as a town?
We just haven't done it since I've been here.
You can take it all to Rye Gate, but you've got to take it and load it up and go to Rye Gate.
And who's going to, I mean, I guess.
Pick it up at that, ninety percent of them that got it outside the house aren't going to have the ambition to.
Get it here.
Bring it up here.
Or somebody's going to throw in bags of garbage and it's, and if it's supposed to be the other stuff.
People who will pick it up from that, bring it down and get rid of it.
Yeah.
That's the one problem with it. I still haven't found the garbage on Goodfell Road. I don't know where it is, but there was a trailer loaded garbage on Goodfell Road somewhere.
Right. So I don't, I don't, I don't know. I, I guess it was just an idea. You guys had mentioned it and.
Uh, do we do this, ever try to do this through, like, the waste management district or you just call our, like, supplier or garbage person?
I just called Myers.
Yeah.
Because Rye Gate has their, their stuff at, right after recycling.
Right.
I'm pretty sure they sponsor, like, the waste management district are sponsored, like, individually located ones in other more populous towns. So they'll, they'll go to like the bigger town and be like, hey, we're doing a, a day here. We'll have our trucks and then they take it back to their home base or whatever, but I don't know if Northeast King or Management District does it, but I can find out.
Okay.
Once I do attend my first meeting.
Yeah, that's right.
All right, yeah, see what, see what happens with that, Mike. Okay, Joe, we'll leave it at that.
Okay.
Okay, uh, where was it? That was maintenance, IT, the computers. Was there anything under IT more than just the computers? Okay, planning commission?
I, I've been all into the BORC thing and I'm sort of planning commission, I'm just going to say I don't know really much about update, even though I cover this shit. Uh, but it's just a bunch of BORC stuff, if I could go into that.
Uh, yeah, just, uh, yeah, no, we're, that's fine, you cover that, yeah.
Uh, so the survey stuff I talked about the last time, that's all been resolved. We left one line completely alone. The sale that took place on this side of the river stands, we're just acquiring the Green Mountain Power property on that side of the river as, as it should be. Survey's almost done. Uh, title opinion, I emailed to everyone, also have to email to the state. And I know from doing business with the state, it seems like if they don't respond with an issue, then it's probably okay. Uh, but I don't know how long they're going to look at that, how, if they're going to look at it or if file it away, um, I'm not sure. Uh, so that was done. Our town attorney can draft the deed.
Okay.
The report, I, I've tried to read the title opinion report and understand it and only thing I saw is that it said that they have a marketable title, which I would assume means they can transfer it, uh, with the deed. So, um, there's a couple of little easements for like springs for cows in the nineteen fifteen, nineteen, like, twenty, uh, time period, which I don't think really are an issue with the title, but I'm not an attorney. Uh, so anyway, this, the next steps with that state are going to look at it.
Okay.
Uh, I would like to know just from you, and I know maybe I haven't looked at this title report, if the state comes back and says, looks good to us, can I just assume it's good for us or do I have to come to you guys and be like, state said it's good and you have to make a motion to go through with like moving to the deed?
I would, I would say that if the state's okay, then we're okay with it.
Yeah, that's kind of.
Yeah, definitely.
I'm going to talk to one of our planning commissioners as an attorney. I don't know what her area or was an attorney. I don't know what her area, that's for cheeseburgers. Have her look at it, see if she catches anything that we should be concerned about.
Okay.
Uh, the other couple of things are, trying to think what I talked about last time. I think I covered that. I have this waiver, um, it's a waiver for records from the grant. Uh, we were apparently supposed to fill it out a lot. They were like, oh, you didn't fill this out yet. Uh, they explained it to me that the original grant agreement required us to keep like an incredible amount of paperwork and this slims it down to like a reasonable amount of like you're keeping your receipts and you're keeping them for three years uh, what I'm assuming we're doing. Uh, so they sent me this, it needs to be signed by an authorizer for the town. I wasn't sure, I signed the grant agreement for the town, uh, after talking with you guys. I wasn't sure if you wanted to sign this too or if you guys just want to sign it now. I've got to get it back to them.
That's fine, you can do it either way. I'm not.
I don't think they're concerned. If you want, I can email it to you before I sign it to look at it, but I.
Okay.
I think you can just sign it.
Sign it. I see you signed the other.
Yeah, that's the thing.
Yeah.
Uh. Don't stir the pot.
Yeah, yeah. The last thing, oh, is Lisa with you. So I know we were talking about doing a test reimbursement submission.
Yeah.
There's a twenty-four question progress report and each, like, each reimbursement request.
Oh.
So I asked the state, and I don't know if this is possible with you, but I just asked the question, if we could submit once at the end. They said yes. So that would be extremely convenient for you. Uh, but I didn't know if that could work with like the finances on the finance side. So that's my question.
Well, I guess I need to relook at the numbers. What are we talking?
Two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars max. Yeah, we, I know we've only spent a thousand so much, so at least we don't have to do that yet, right? We can wait on that, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I wouldn't wait to make it.
No. So when the Blue Mountain invoice comes in for a hundred thirteen thousand dollars, we'll, we'll have to submit that pretty right off.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, so we'll, we'll have to come up with a, hopefully, maybe once I do it once, I can just resubmit it every time with like just an additional sentence or something.
Okay.
Uh, but I just wanted to review all of that. Did I ever send, and I also want to send you this budget spreadsheet the state sent us um, that I have in my planning commission email.
Okay.
Uh, and that's it. That's all I have for the board.
Okay. Thanks, Mike. Okay, so ongoing, ongoing grants, which we've covered, the infrastructure, BORC, drainage project, community center.
Nothing.
Okay, EV charging.
Nothing new, I've seen.
Okay, energy grant.
Nothing.
Tree grant.
I, I just know Steve's measuring the trees in the spots. I had to hold the measuring tape. We did, we did that.
Uh, and not weed grant?
Not weed, there's a little issue. Um, I don't know if it's a big deal or not. They needed something. I saw an email from the state to the, to Nick Smith, who I think is, is Alan, the guy that works in town. Lives in town, works on this. So I think he, he took care of it.
Okay, all right, good. Uh, open to public and other business. Brent Smith?
I apologize to the board.
Okay.
I asked for permission to, to be on two or three meetings ago and I.
You, you were a no-show.
I was a no-show, so I apologize for that. I wasn't professional. Um, and so we want to, uh, the cemetery commission wants to access off of the railroad bed.
Okay.
On the west end, uh, put an access into the west end of, uh, of the Riverside Cemetery, so we don't have authority. That's not our property. The railroad bed is town property and, and we're not responsible for the railroad bed, so I wanted to come to the sled board to see if it was all right to, uh, to do that before they did all the work on the tracks.
Do we have to do anything through Dan and that's all good to that? So I don't see a problem with it.
Nope. So it's simple to know before.
It's going to be a pretty cool.
Work on deeds. Okay. As long as Dan, there's no problems, so we're, you have our permission.
Okay, thank you very much.
And one other thing on the cemetery, um, about the work that was done down there by Emerson and Sons. I drove down there today and it looks fabulous. It looks really nice. They did a really great job, clean, just a really, really good improvement.
They did over about what we expected.
Yeah.
That's going to be a really nice terrace.
Super nice. Opened it up and, yep, just, it looks good.
Yeah.
Uh, will we go in there at some point and clean the, some of the brush up or are we just going to let it?
I believe our, our, our plan at this time is to, um, talk with, with the town engineer when he's here.
Yeah.
And, and before we go in and do anything, have him look at it and say, okay, this is what you need to do.
Yeah, like put the path through there.
Well, we're going to take a stump out, we're going to do this and if we spend money taking stumps out and he go, well, that, that, that side over there isn't, that doesn't make any sense.
Yeah.
You know, so have a plan as to what, what he would suggest. We don't want bodies sliding downhill and, uh, so that's our, the next step is to have, have it looked at by, by Nate and say, okay, this is what I'd recommend for you to do and then figure out how we're going to pay for it, how we're going to get it done.
So our plan is to put more bodies in there.
Yeah, add more lots and, um, we, we approached, um, and, and we talked about it for, for probably twenty years about doing something with that.
Yeah.
And so we're, and so before we get pushed to, before we get pushed to Riverside Cemetery, uh, one of the, um, older, uh, previous, previous commissioners come to our meeting and, and suggested that we, we look at that and try to use some of that space there and then we can take a, a more thorough look at what we're going to do with Riverside. See, oh, we, we, you know, we, we've got to get something done. And so, uh, this will give us a, this will give us a, a cushion. Uh, if we're able to, if we're able to get some plots up on that, somehow on that, on that slope. Then, but the key thing was, even if we don't, aren't able to develop it, the trees are falling down.
Yeah, you need to, it's all around there.
Yeah, they need to go away, so.
Yeah, no, good job. It looks like we're impressed by it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Uh, so set agenda for the next meeting, which we, unless there's any other public, anybody, okay? Uh, set agenda for the next meeting, which we've kind of talked about some things that we're going to continue to talk about. Is there anything else that?
So, uh, Harley, remove the, um, NVDA emergency service building, um, grant from the grant, because that was not going to happen.
And the adopt, the local management can come off.
And I will not be at the next meeting, May fifteenth meeting.
Okay, paving can come off.
Yeah, the whole top section can come off.
Well, we're still going to talk about, um.
Town policy.
Town.
But that I have in follow-up anyways. The ordinance rules for, is that what you're talking about, for rail trail and the no overnight camping? So that's staying.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anything else I'm adding to the law?
Uh, and more discussion on gates. Would we need more railroad?
I knew there was something.
So what are we, putting it as railroad access or something, gate access gate?
Gating railroad.
Railroad gating railroad bed, more discussion.
I'm trying to get a number.
Yeah, need a number.
And at the top, you can do the warning for the.
Oh.
Special town meeting.
Special town meeting.
I'll be out of town in the next couple of weeks.
Okay, that's right here. So you won't be at the next meeting then?
You can do Australian ballot.
So hopefully, exactly.
Because it's Australian, right?
Right.
I guess it hinders on that.
But, uh, when do we start our, we start our?
Is it June or July that starts something?
June, right, on one meeting. But we have a town, a special town meeting we're going to have in there too.
But that, don't, don't forget, that's nothing. That's just.
A vote sitting there.
Oh, right, 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 that's right.
Parcary is the one that.
Yeah.
Lot of ways you can get people coming to office.
Yeah. She gets all their signs out there.
It was nice doing it that way for the school vote that had written the office.
Okay, so, um, we just need to sign orders and to sign stuff in the poll. All right, how about a, a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
I second it. I'm in favor, say aye.
Aye.